I'd like to call the Tuesday, September 4th, 2018 Papillion City Council Meeting to order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the roll?
Florence, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. Ms. Myers, Administrator's Report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Tomorrow night, the Sarpy Wastewater Agency has a meeting. An important decision in front of the group tomorrow night is relative to the three options presented for the Phase One sewer infrastructure. The good thing is that all three alternatives provide benefit to Papillion's jurisdiction, but generally speaking, I think there's going to be a recommendation from the consultant to an area that would include, I'm not sure how many acres, but north of Cape Park Road along Highway 50, which would accommodate data centers, and then an area north of Platteview Road along 72nd Street to about Cape Park Road. I think I sent you those maps, et cetera, so if you want to take a look at that, if you have any questions. This came about as the sewer agency consultant met with developers, et cetera, and they pinpoint what they thought was the best area for high development in the near future, and so I believe that will be the recommendation to the agency tomorrow night for a vote. So, please let me know if you have questions. Also, a thank you to Carla and Amber. We finally got a district court ruling with an order of approval for the partial annexation on the Springfield Rural Fire District boundary. This was a result of our 2017 annexation on Facebook Travelers, Oxbow, and the National Cemetery. Again, because it was a partial annexation, we had to jump through some extra hoops, but we did reach agreement and that was approved. Additionally, you should have received an email, and if not, we'll send that out to you, but salute to Public Safety Event is scheduled for Sunday, September 9th, beginning at 7:30 a.m. at the Hy-Vee location. And again, the event recognizes first responders for their significant contributions to our community. Please make plans to attend. Also, Papillion has been awarded the Voice of the People Award for Built Environment by the National Research Center. If you recall, we did our citizen survey the second year this year, and based on those results and results of other communities that participate in the survey, Papillion was awarded this recognition. It's based on community opinion, and it rates our planning, design standards, quality of development, code enforcement, and we were very high when compared with other cities. So, Amber and I will be accepting the award on behalf of the city of Papillion at the ICMA conference the end of September. So, thank you all for your hard work in getting that. Additionally, the PCA and the IAFF, we exchanged collective bargaining agreement proposals. We haven't had an opportunity to review those. I would expect formal negotiations to begin in about 30 days. And lastly, I just wanted to thank Jeff and his team for the extra work on the water main break over the holiday weekend. I know you guys spent a lot of hours doing that. We certainly appreciate it. Thank you, Jeff. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to poll C-5.
C-5 is polled.
And I'll approve the agenda.
So, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Stube. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote on everything except C-5. Motion passes. Next is item C-5, Resolution R180145, a resolution to approve acceptance of a grant in the amount of $20,000 from McKee Foods, Inc. of College Dale, Tennessee, for the installation of new outdoor fitness area, Prairie Queen Recreation Area. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R180145?
(inaudible).
Motion by Councilman Jaworski, second by Councilman Stube. I will call for any proponents, and I know Brian is here. Brian, you want to come up a second? Brian is a Papillion resident that actually works for McKee Foods, and he's the one that approached Mr. Gowin and I and made us aware of this opportunity. Brian, we've got a little bit of time. You just want to talk a little bit about it, maybe McKee, kind of what the motivation is, what the program is?
Basically, let me start off, a resident of Papillion for 28 years.
Can you state your name for the record?
Brian Cock, 903 Coyle Ridge Circle. Been a resident here for 28 years, had the opportunity to move out here with my wife and my family. And our company, McKee Foods, just recently were involved with an outdoor happiness movement. It's a program we call the OH Movement, O-H. And what that is, is we've recognized the fact that people, whether young, old, or indifferent, are sitting behind a screen seven hours a day on average. And we wanted to, basically, we wanted to give back to 50 states in five years, some community of some sort in each state, whether it's biking, trails, hiking, jogging, fitness, whatever. I got involved with it with our company, and I couldn't think of a better thing to do than give back to the city that's given my wife, myself, and my family so many opportunities in the last 28 years. So, I believe it was in May, late May, I reached out to Tony Gowin, and you, Mayor, were there for the meeting, and it's just a win-win situation. I won't get into all the details, but what it'll do is give 24 access to people in this community. It'll give them a chance to exercise and overlook the beautiful Prairie Queen that's out there to the west of us, and it's just a matter of, it's a no-brainer on giving back to the community. Now, years ago, you and I went round and round on that splash pad, Tom, but seven grandchildren later, I love you for it, so thank you. But that's basically it. It's whether it's exercise, or look out at that view, and just enjoy the evening. And I just want to thank you, and Tony, thank you so much for taking time and giving me the opportunity to explain the program, and it's just a feel-good thing.
That's a very significant amount of money, and for a resident to think of us and get us involved and make us aware, a huge thank you, so wouldn't be happening without you.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion, but maybe Tony, real quick. Can you maybe talk a little bit about it from your perspective?
Yes, when Brian first came to us with this generous offer with the grant, and I think it's, is it the only 20,000 in the state of Nebraska? Okay, so we're very fortunate to have it. It is the only city in the state of Nebraska. But we've had such a popular movement with the outdoor fitness areas, one at Monarch Gardens Park, the other one being at Hallic Park Lake, that when he brought forth this idea, I just thought it was kind of a no-brainer to maybe expand on that out west now. And so, we've found a really pretty area right above the boat dock on a bluff that would overlook the parking area, so people would be able to see it quite readily as they park and get on the trail at Prairie Queen. This is really, besides the boat dock and fishing, the main amenity at Prairie Queen would be the fitness, the trail, of course, but the fitness area off the trail. And it's become very popular in our other two parks where we have it, and so I thought it would just be a nice amenity to have out of Prairie Queen, too.
Thank you very much. Any council discussion? If not, please vote. Thank you again. Motion passes. Next is item D-1, Ordinance 1820, an ordinance to approve the vacation of a portion of the alley right of what is legally described as the west seven feet of the east 70 feet of the south 44 feet of Lot 7, Block 18 Papillion, a subdivision in Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the east side of 129 North Washington Street. Is there a council member that'll introduce?
(inaudible).
Introduced by Councilman Ingberg. Item E-1, Ordinance 1818, an ordinance to approve a change of zone for the property legally described as lots 236, 237, and 238, Terra Heights, a subdivision in Sarpy County, Nebraska, and tax lot A1B1C, located in the southwest quarter of Section 23, Township 14 North, range 12 East of the 6 PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located northeast of the intersection of North Washington and Hogan Drive, as follows. Lot 2, Terra Heights Replat 1, from both CC Community Commercial and R4 Multi-Family Residential to R4 Multi-Family Residential only. The applicant is the Lund Company, Tanya Shapiro, for Terra Heights Replat 1. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Close the public hearing. Item F-1, Resolution R180151, a public hearing and a vote, a resolution to approve a preliminary plat for the property legally described as lots 236, 237, and 238, Terra Heights, a subdivision in Sarpy County, Nebraska, and tax lot A1B1C in the southwest quarter of Section 23, Township 14 North, range 12 East of the 6 PM, said Sarpy County, generally located northeast of the intersection of North Washington Street and Hogan Drive. The applicant's the Lund Company. Again, this is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R180151?
(inaudible).
Motion by Councilman Stube, second by Councilman Ingberg. Any council discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. Item F-2, Resolution R180155, this is a public hearing and a vote, a resolution to approve setting the 2018-2019 property tax request. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Anybody neutral? Close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R180155?
(inaudible).
Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Klug. Any council discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. Item F-3, Ordinance 1815, an ordinance to amend the 2017-2018 fiscal budget. Do we have a motion to approve Ordinance 1815?
(inaudible).
Motion by Councilman Jaworski, second by Councilman Stube. Any council discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. Next one, we've got a couple of things on here, and this is routine every budget year, a couple of items. Item F-4, Ordinance 1816, first is a motion to approve the 2018-2019 fiscal budget. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 1816?
(inaudible).
Motion by Councilman Stube, second by Councilman Ingberg. Any council discussion on that? Next, every year, we have Item 1A, a motion to approve the 1% increase to the LID Restricted Funds Authority. This does require a supermajority. This does not imply we're using it, but it gives us the authority to use it. And so, do we have a motion to approve the 1% increase to the LID?
(inaudible).
Motion by Councilman Klug, second by Councilman Glover. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Any council discussion? And this requires a supermajority. Please vote. Motion passes. Item 2A, a motion to approve an amendment proposed by staff. It's outlined on page 24 of the packet. Again, a routine item that just syncs up the final certified valuation with the initial preliminary evaluation. And so, do we have a motion to approve an amendment proposed by staff as outlined on page 24?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Mumgarth, second by Councilman Stube. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion. Mr. Mumgarth.
I just want to draw everybody's attention to an item that is discussed very briefly in the proposed staff amendment. Couple weeks ago, or some time back, I sent out an email requesting an amendment to the budget that would have provided a line item, budgetary item, to provide some money to begin to study creating, developing, constructing some sort of eastern access to Hallic Park, to get Hallic Park directly accessible from 72nd Street. Now, this is an item that I've had some interest in for some time, and I think several months ago, a citizen even actually came to the media and talked about it. As Hallic Park has developed over the years, it basically has access only from, primarily from the west, off of Washington Street, through an industrial commercial area, or from the south, through a residential area. I've long thought that, well, and I can understand when Hallic Park was developed, that that was, that made sense. I've long thought as, you know, Papio Bay got developed, and the baseball fields, and everything's out there on the east, that we needed to start paying attention to getting people in and out of Hallic Park from 72nd Street. Last year, when we had to move these soccer fields to develop the recreation center, we put temporary soccer fields over there. I said, "Well, okay, that makes some sense." But that land where those temporary soccer fields sit, I think could be more, well, someday, we're going to move those fields back out to the recreation center, and that land will become available for some other use. And I think that it is time that we have to start looking at whether we should use that land, or some other way to get people in and out of Hallic Park more directly from 72nd Street. I would hope that, I would think that the people who live on the south side of Hallic Park might think that's a really good idea, because right now, people come and go to the park through their neighborhoods. Ideally, I'd like to see, you know, a direct access point to 72nd Street, but I concede, maybe that's not practical, maybe that's what it shouldn't be. So, all I'm asking for at this time is that we begin, we at least identify some money to at least look at what the options might be, so that in a couple of years, or a year or two, when that, those temporary soccer field area becomes available, we're ready to try to solve what I see as a problem. I think Hallic Park deserves an eastern access. And so, I ask that, well, this is the time we should start looking at it. That didn't, the staff indicated that wasn't necessary, because as everybody probably has seen on page 24 of the staff amendment report, there has been, you know, they go through, and they, the numbers shift one way or the other, and they've come up with $13,046 that are, have not been previously allocated, and that has now been put into an account from which we could draw to begin to study that eastern Hallic Park access point. And again, voting for this is not committing to spend the money, is not, you know, deciding whether we should or shouldn't have an access point to the east, is not deciding where it would be, or anything like that. It is just deciding that, yes, we are going to earmark some money that we can answer those questions. And if those questions come up, to be, "Mumgarth, you're crazy," so be it. If it, they come up that, "Well, yeah, it's a good idea, just like a splash pad turned out to be," maybe we can do it. So, I just wanted to make sure that when the budget gets adopted here, we realize that, and maybe toot that horn a little bit, that, yes, let's start thinking very strongly and making some plans for how we get traffic and people in and out of Hallic Park from the east. And I think this is a very small step to get to that point, and I hope we can all, in the future, agree on something that will accomplish that, but at least this point, the money is set aside. So, I want to draw your attention to it, and thank you for your consideration of it in the future.
Thank you very much. Any other council discussion? If not, please vote on the motion to approve an amendment. Motion passes. Now, we're back to the original motion as amended, so any other council discussion? Please vote on the original motion as amended. Motion passes. Item F-5, Resolution R180158, a resolution to approve a change in employee dental coverage from fully insured to self-funded. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R180158?
(inaudible).
Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Klug. Any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Mr. Florence.
Yeah, I was wondering, just for the folks that may be watching, can you explain, or can it be explained, the difference between self-funding and insured, and why this works, and what the liabilities are with this?
Ms. Myers.
Absolutely, Mr. Florence. Granted, when you have a fully insured program, we just pay premiums, and we don't worry about claims. Those are paid by the insurance vendor. In this case, when we received our renewal, there was a significant double-digit increase. Through the process of self-funding means that we will, instead of collecting, sending the premiums to an insurance vendor, we will keep the amount of premiums with us. We'll have a third-party administrator, and we will pay the claims out of our premium collection that would normally be going to an insurance company. And that saved us about 13% doing that based on historical claims and what our consultant indicates will be future claims.
Okay. And so, when you go to self-funded, I mean, it's not a forever thing. It seems to me that we did some self-funded insurance four years ago, maybe? And then, and so what causes just you to go back and forth? Is it always, it's always an economic decision?
It's economics. It's a risk decision. When you move to self-funded, some of the risk shifts to us, which is why the premium cost goes down. And in years where we have a good claims history, we can build up a pool of funds, and if there's a bad year, then hopefully you've got enough funds to cover that. And then, one component, a lot of times, with self-insured, then, is you actually mitigate a little bit of your risk by re-insuring at a higher level, and that controls your ultimate exposure. The example you mentioned was with healthcare, which is our large item. Dental is small in comparison. I think it was probably seven years ago, maybe, we were facing, every year, we were facing double-digit increases in health insurance premiums. And we were going to the market to rebid that every time to try to get the cost down, but it got to a point, we weren't bringing the cost down, so we did decide to move to self-insured at that time. The issue was, you can jump all the way to self-insured, or you can kind of migrate there. We jumped all in to control the expense, and just like with insurance, some years, you have some bad experiences with claims, you have really high claims, and we had a number of items that hit us from a high claims perspective that year. And so, I'm going to guess, in a rolling five-year period, in a self-insured world, you're probably hoping for a couple of really good years, maybe an average year and a bad year, and then it all evens out. The first year we went, we had the worst year. So, then it made sense to go back to the private market, and then over time, wean our way back into self-insured, and this really is our first step at weaning back into that world through dental.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Motion passes. Item F-6, Resolution R180160, a resolution to approve four service mark applications in association with the name Papillion Landing, and three distinctive logos for the new community center, and to register the aforementioned name and logos with the state of Nebraska. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R180160?
(inaudible).
Motion by Councilman Stube, second by Councilman Jaworski. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Mr. Florence.
So, I know this is related to this particular trademark, but are we also looking at domain names?
We've already got them, don't we? Yep. We already have them acquired.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, please vote. Motion passes. It's all the regular agenda items. I think the only committee that has met was the Audit Committee, which I actually met tonight. Do we have a report back from that? Mr. Mumgarth.
Yes, the Audit Committee met tonight, and our agenda item that we spent most time on, well, we sent two items. We recommended that the city contract, continue to contract with HSMC Horizon to conduct the annual audit, so a resolution to do that will, I guess, be coming to the council in the near future, if not the next meeting. We then had a very interesting discussion about whether, particularly the operations that the city conducts that are mostly cash-based, such as the golf course, the swimming pool, et cetera, concession stands, whether we're doing sufficient oversight on those cash flow type operations. A year ago, we had the auditor specifically look at the golf course accounting. They made several recommendations for changes that should be made to have a better handle on how the golf course funds are being handled. The committee discussed it in depth, and we've decided we'll have another meeting to, with the golf course personnel to specifically see what, if any, or more optimistically, which of the recommendations have been implemented, how they're coming about, what more might need to be done. We just want to make sure that there's all the oversight that's necessary, particularly on those cash-based operations that the city engages in. So, we will have another meeting next month and make sure that the recommendations for the golf operation are being followed.
Thank you very much. No other committees have met. Any comments from the floor? I think we've got a couple of students. What, do you guys want to come up and introduce yourselves?
Um, I'm Vanessa, and I go to Papillion Vista South.
And I'm Maddie Weickel, and I go to Papillion Vista South, too.
What brings you out?
AP.
AP Government.
Yeah.
Mr. Keller?
Yep.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any council comments? Just a few things from the last couple of weeks. The chamber had its Economic Outlook event. Several were there, a good event, some good insight into what's going on in the county from a growth perspective. Ms. Myers and I met in regards to the Wastewater Agency meeting. Again, if you have any questions about that recommendation or that proposal, let us know. That meeting's this week. We, Ms. Myers and I also had an interesting meeting with a Sarpy not-for-profit, Lift Up Sarpy County, investigating at, a council member's recommendation, a utility assistance program. Somebody, maybe low-income, struggling with some bills, and they're making a decision, do I pay my water bill, or do I get groceries, and looking at maybe having a utility assistance program specifically for the Papillons Utility System. It's not something we want to run, because we don't want to be making those decisions, but Lift Up Sarpy is, we just had a very good discussion. They're going to go back to their board level and talk, maybe if they could be a partner in that type of program, then we'll figure out how to maybe start something. We'll bring that to the council for a formal recommendation if we do that. So, just wanted to let you know we're having those discussions. Just a couple of good things going on from a business perspective, if people aren't aware. Just this last week, in fact, today, The Good Life is opening. They're on 96th and Giles, is opening, sports bar, locally owned. Grayley's Ice Cream and Confectionery Shop in downtown Papillion opens this week. They just passed their health inspections, and they're going to kind of do a soft, quiet opening in the afternoons. Two downtown businesses actually are expanding, Wooden Knit Be Nice and Diane's Tea Shop. And then, Midland's Place, there's a sign-up of a new local business coming in. It's a trend called boba tea and rolled ice cream, and I see some people nodding, that it's a great thing. So, five businesses opening or expanding, just announced this last week between downtown and Midland's Place. So, again, just thank you for everything you're doing to help with that, with that economic development. Two things for your calendar, three things. If you're interested in conferences, the League of Municipalities Conference is in Kearney on September 19th. Let Taylor know if you're interested in registering for that. And then, there's a flyer at your desk about the MAPPA Annual Conference on October 3rd at the Mid-America Center. Again, let Taylor know if you're interested to go to that, and then we'll do a group registration there. Only other thing is, Sunday, this Sunday, Guitars for Vets, a local not-for-profit, using guitars and music to help vets-
guitars in music to help veterans. I think it's mainly PTSD-type issues. They're having a fundraiser at Sumter Amphitheater at 3:00 p.m. on Sunday, so maybe come out and support that. Any other council comments? If not, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion by Councilman Glover? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Stube. Please vote.
Seven eight zero nays.
We are adjourned.